Call me in the morning, call him Captain Kerry Barton.
Me too.
I pay the dues to the land of United States of America and to the brotherland for which stands one nation of God in his wisdom with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, Captain Watson.
Mayor, keep in with the tradition I got in my district, I try to invite ministers from the church within my district. I'd like to call up Reverend Paul Lee. He's the pastor of First Sanlon Missionary Baptist Church at Brandon, dedication.
Yes, sir.
Let us pray. Father God, as we come now, we thank you again for another day, and we thank you for the new year that you have allowed us to be a part of. We ask you now that you'll be in a part of this meeting, Father, as we now come into the session, we ask that you will bless each and every one, and that you will give us an open mind, Father, that we can come in with a clear mind and a clear understanding. We ask this in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Poole?
Here.
Councilman Cotton?
Here.
Councilman Kerry Barton?
Here.
Councilman Watson?
Here.
Councilman Fred Barton?
Here.
Mayor Lovelace?
Here.
We have a quorum for business, sir.
Approval of the minutes from the last meeting. May I make a motion with approval of the last meeting minutes at anybody clear?
Second. Motion by Councilman Kerry Barton to approve the minutes from the last meeting, seconded by Councilman Fred Barton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes and the minutes from the previous meeting are approved.
I'd like to welcome our visitors here today. We have a nice crowd, a larger crowd than we've had in a while. I'm glad y'all are all here. Approval of the agenda.
Mayor, the council has a copy of the agenda, and there's a copy on the wall for those in the audience. Are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda?
I'd like to add item 10G, Jam Productions, Anthony Rogers.
And permissible to delete item D. Drop it?
Yeah, drop Rob's Taxi Service.
Any others? All those who would like to approve the agenda as amended, that is adding item G for Jam Productions and dropping item D for Rob's Taxi Service, all those who'd like to approve that as amended, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Ayes have it, and the agenda is approved.
Called up the public here on a bed and breakfast ordinance, and asks, is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of that ordinance?
I'm coming George, at 18 Douglas Avenue, and Dever and I, of course, are doing this project, and we're taking this old building that was in pretty bad shape, a lot worse shape than we thought it was, actually. We're really making it into something really nice, making it an asset for the community. And so, we certainly want to, you know, make it a nice place for people to stay, and the bed and breakfast is the best way for us to do that, to enhance its value and enhance the value of it to the community. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anybody here would like to speak in opposition? I don't know. The public here.
Mayor and council, this matter has gone through the planning commission. It would be up to you, if you see fit, to act on this ordinance today, to approve this, and it would be totally replacing the ordinance that we've been operating under that is in the Land Use and Development Ordinance under Article 18 Bed and Breakfast Ordinance. If it's your favor or pleasure to approve this today, it would have to occur through a three-step process, the introduction of the ordinance, the immediate consideration, and then a vote for approval. So what would be your desires?
I'll put motion to introduce ordinance number 16-011.
Second. Motion by Councilman Watson to approve ordinance number 16-0111, seconded by Councilman Poole. Is there any discussion?
Introduction or approval?
Excuse me. Introduction.
Introduction.
Motion to introduce. Thank you for staying with me. Hearing none. Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Joe Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes and ordinance number 16-0111 is introduced.
Offer motion for immediate consideration, ordinance number 16-011.
Second. Motion by Councilman Watson for immediate consideration of ordinance number 16-0111, seconded by Councilman Poole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes and ordinance number 16-0111 is immediately considered.
Offer motion to approve ordinance number 16-011.
Second. Motion by Councilman Watson to approve ordinance number 16-0111, seconded by Councilman Kerry Barton. Is there any discussion?
Steve, on the previous motion, doesn't that take unanimous consideration?
You left your...
And if it does, I think I'll vote yes.
I need to back up on that, okay?
I'll vote yes.
Thank you, sir. It's good to have people helping me. So, Councilman Watson, your motion, and Councilman Barton, your second, stands good still, right? Okay. Thank you. Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance number 16-0111 is approved, and it will become effective into law upon publication.
Good luck with the new venture. Under old business, we have none. Under new business, we have approval of the January 2016 accounts payable. Motion to pay out bill.
Second. Motion by Councilman Kerry Barton to approve accounts payable, seconded by Councilman Watson. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, accounts payable are approved.
Next item, the council, or the city of Bruton, also financially supports the Chamber of Commerce, and I just want to say for one that I think the chamber is doing a wonderful job, and every event I've been to has just really been wonderful. But we've asked, they come time to time and give us report, and call them Clay Liz and be to give a report for their events for 2016.
Thank you, Mayor. I am the current chamber president, and I appreciate y'all inviting us today to be here. We do appreciate the city's financial support of our events. We feel that we have a strong board at this time, and that we have accomplished some positive things in the city, and we have a good lineup for 2016. On March 8th, we have our chamber banquet planned to recognize the citizen or citizens of the year. That will be held this year at Hourglass 31, which was formerly known as The Hourglass. In April, we participate with helping promote Earth Day. We will make news releases, get flyers to schools, and help promote any events going on and associated with Earth Day. On April 9th, we have planned our annual concert in Crawfish Bowl, Kick It At The Creek. That event has grown over the past years that we've been, since it's been established. We host that in Jennings Park downtown, and in May, we will host our annual Chamber Gok Tournament at the Country Club of Bruton. That date is still yet to be announced. June 18th, we will host the 36th Annual Alabama Blueberry Festival in Jennings Park. Last year, we made quite a number of changes to the Blueberry Festival, which we feel were very well received from the response we have gotten from the public. Another date to be announced after July 19th, we will host a coffee and candidates meeting, and we don't have a location determined for that event yet either. From September until May, our adult and youth leadership classes will begin. This will be our 19th adult leadership class. We'll have 10 people participate in that class, and it will be our 11th youth leadership class. We'll have seven juniors from WS Neil and seven juniors from TR Miller High School that will participate in youth leadership, and that runs from September through May. This year, we have plans to include both the adult and the youth leadership with more of our events, to help us and to give them more community service time, an opportunity to do that. We have our annual PCA rodeo scheduled for October 14th and 15th of this year that is held in O'Bannon Park. We have plans to, last year, we combined our smoked barbecue competition with the rodeo, and the participants in the barbecue competition were pleased with combining those events, and we have plans to do the same this year, as well as adding some other activities to enhance that event. November 17th will be our annual holiday kickoff. The businesses in town will offer later shopping hours and special sales. We have got a great positive response from our event that was just held this past November, and so we're looking forward to that being another successful event. That's something that helps the farmers market as well. They set up on the same night, and that benefits both of our groups. In December, the chamber works with the Kiwanis Club and the Sportsman's Club on our annual Christmas project to help less fortunate children and elderly in our area. We shop for items locally, and this year, over $25,000 was spent locally, and over 500 children and 100 elderly people were helped through this project. We have scheduled the Christmas parade for December 9th at 6:00 PM. This will be the third year that we've held a night Christmas parade. That's another time when the farmers market sets up as well, and we've gotten a lot of positive response from changing it to a night parade, and so far, haven't encountered any problems with it being at night, and so we are looking forward to that again. And in addition to these events, each, the first Thursday of each month, we work with the Women's Business Center to host a business and breakfast. It's been held here at the chamber office a few times, and then we also give local businesses the opportunity to host that event at their place of business, if they would like to do so. And it's beginning to grow. We feel that having it at the, on the same day of each month lets people get it in their mind and will help our attendance. And again, we just appreciate the city's support, and we're here to help in any way we can with any ideas that you all have for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Clay.
Clay, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Go back to the Christmas parade. Now, I have some individual ask me about entry fees. Could we look at entry fees? Say, if we're not in the competition to be judged, but want to put a float in the parade, do you still have to pay?
There is a reduced entry fee for floats that are not being judged, and if that is a problem, we had 60, over 60 floats that participated this year, but of course, we could...
No, I mean, they still entered the parade. They were paying the money, but they weren't aware of the entry fee being for like, just a regular person wanting to have a float in the parade, per se.
Yes.
Now, that's why I asked that question.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Clay. Appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you.
And I call on the city clerk. The next item.
Mr. Thomas Watson?
I put it out there.
We've received an application for a Martin Luther King Day, for Martin Luther King Parade to be held on January the 16th. It would assemble at 11:00. The parade would go from about 12:00 to 1:30. It would gather and collect there at the city shop, and it would go to Lyles Boulevard. Our police department has been notified, as well as our other department heads. Plans are made, everything's coordinated with it, so at this juncture, we see nothing but a green light, but it's pending council approval today to give permission for that. I make a motion to approve? Second. Motion by Councilman Fred Barton to give approval for the Martin Luther King Day Parade to be held on January the 16th, seconded by Councilman Kerry Barton. Is there any discussion? Steve, let's put the times out there that it should start. Supposed to start at 12:00. Assemble at 11:00. Parade start at 12:00. And every how long it takes to get to Lyles Boulevard, roughly an hour or so. Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes and approval is given for the Martin Luther King Parade to be held on January the 16th on Sowell Road.
Next item, Goodwin Mills and Kaywood, Bob Carter is their representative. He has two proposals to give us, and then two proposals to vote on.
Thank you, Mayor. First proposal is to do a master plan for the area kind of across the street, just little ways that's presently used as golf courses, a 90-acre parcel of land there. As I understand, there's some interest in some possible development in that, in that area, on that parcel, and the purpose of the study would be to do a master plan for the property to determine the best use of that property going forward for the city. This would be kind of a follow-up to the master plan that Goodwin Mills and Kaywood had done for you a couple of years ago, but it would be kind of centered on that piece of property, and that would be to have best to use that property.
If at a future time we vote to do that, what would be the cost of that?
The cost is $8,500. The next proposal is...
Before you go, last question. You say, when you say property, you say the 90 acre property, they're just a golf course. They ain't including the building, nothing like that, they're just the actual grounds. Are we talking about the whole property?
Well, really, the whole property.
Including the building?
Right, yeah. Now, you know, how would, how should that best be used? What is the best use for the city? There would be some public hearings involved in that and so forth, and, you know, to come up with, you know, what, what the city, what the city would want to do going forward with that property and how to best use that property.
So, in other words, your recommendation might be close it down, in a sense. It could be that. Close the golf course down. It could be that, right?
Yeah, we don't, you know, we have...
No, I'm saying, during the study, you said the best use of the property means it's including everything. So, it might, you know, study, it might say, instead of a golf course here, we might have put a shed, whole bicycles over there, it'd be better use for the city. It could be something in that effect, absolutely.
Right, yeah. Or, you know, you could develop it with a shopping center, or, you know, houses, or you keep it as a golf course, you know. There's no preconceived ideas about how to use it going forward. Okay. Any other questions on that? The other one is to do a study at the city's industrial park. It's, lies north of Highway 31, kind of across from the paper mill. The city originally owned a 160-acre parcel out there. Several parcels have been sold off over the years, but the city still has approximately, I think about 110 or 20 acres out there that is designated for use for industry. Our proposal would be to do the studies necessary to have that your industrial park designated as an advantage site. That is a program that's ran by an agency called the Economic Development Partnership of Alabama. That is a private nonprofit agency established by industries in Alabama that work cooperatively with the city, with the state, to recruit industry into our state. And the whole purpose of the program is for the, all the preliminary work be done ahead of time that the industry would need if they were to choose this site to come in and develop. For example, some of the things that are required in the study are a accurate boundary survey, given the boundaries of the property, topographic survey to a two-foot contour interval, wetland surveys, archaeological and historical surveys, and geotechnical survey, which would include borings of the soils to determine the type of soils that are available. That would be an important thing, you know, for industries who, you know, they plan to build on the site. There is approximately 36 of these sites that have been approved in Alabama so far, and there's been over 4,000 jobs since 2008 brought just to these 36 sites. So this proposal would do the necessary work for Bruton, have your industrial park designated an advantage site. It's a lot of work involved in it, you know, to get this done. But the good thing about it is, if you had an industry that wanted to come out there, all of this stuff would have to be done prior to them coming. The advantage that you have is it's done ahead of time so that as you're marketing the property, as the state's marketing the property, and as the Economic Development Partnership of Alabama, which will help you market this property. It's already done, and when they talk to an industry, they say, we can give you a site here, you know, that has, you know, everything that you need. There are maps that have to be done to show all the utilities, the capacity of all the utilities. That's not only water, sewer, and gas, but also TV cable, power, telephone, internet, you know, broadband. All of those things are included in this so that, you know, when, when an industry says, we need a site with these characteristics, then they can quickly look at this and know that you've got that available for them. That's the purpose of this study. Now, it's expensive because from what we can find, there's not any information currently available on the park related to this. We've not found a boundary survey, you know, or any of these other tests that have been done, so we really have to start from scratch, and it's really a lot of work to be done to get this, you know, get this work done, if you would like to proceed with that. But the estimated cost of that is $116,570. Now, that's a cost not to exceed. We've set it up on an hourly basis, and it's segmented by different parts of the study, such as the wetlands, or historical, or any of the surveying or mapping. If any of that work has previously been done by the city and we can find it and use it, then we won't have, you won't have to pay for that again. We'll just use what you already have. But so far, we've not been able to find any of that information.
Next two items you'll be going over is the preliminary paperwork that we need to approve to apply for the next TAP grant to extend the sidewalk from, on Bevel Avenue on Tiger Drive to Alexander Heights.
There's two resolutions we need passed for that. The Alabama Department of Transportation has announced that they will accept grant applications through January 29th of this year, which is a quick turnaround because we just, you know, got one funded last year for Old Caspary Road. The project that we've looked at is on Appleton Road, getting that Tiger Drive and going, I think, to Alexander, I believe. These resolutions just simply state that the city agrees to pay for 20% of the project cost, which is the local match. The other 80% will come from DOT funds, but the city would also need to pay for the design fees, which DOT did not participate in the design fees. The estimated construction cost of the project's approximately $230,000, and the design is approximately $30,000.
Is this a res, we need to vote on this now, Mayor?
Yes, we need a motion on this resolution.
I make a motion on the resolution 2016-0111. Second. Motion by Councilman Poole, seconded by Councilman Cotton, to approve resolution number 2016-0111, authorizing Goodwin Mills Kaywood to make application to the Department of Transportation for a sidewalk extension from Tiger Drive to Georgia Lane. Is there any discussion?
Correct that on Georgia Lane, it's really Alexander Drive.
Okay. Any discussion or questions?
There's $30,000 for your design. It's not the match money. Is it the match money?
No, the DOT requires that the city provide the design work to get their plans and specs initially done. From that point forward, it's all 80/20.
Any other questions? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes and resolution number 2016-0111 is approved.
And this is for the city of Bruton, sponsor affidavit, that we would provide, if awarded this grant, the 20% matching funds.
Correct.
And that would be resolution, resolution 2016-0111-1.
That is correct. I make a motion. Second. Motion by Councilman Poole to approve resolution number twenty sixteen dash zero one 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 dash one, pledging matching funds from the city for this project if approved, seconded by Councilman Barton. Is there any discussion? Councilman Fred Barton, second. Hearing none, Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes and resolution number sixteen dash zero one 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 dash one is approved.
Thank you, pal.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Mayor.
Counselor.
Thank you.
The next item is a presentation by Representative of KSH Leva for Hotel Bruton.
Mayor Lovace, uh, City Council, thank you for, for generosity with your time and for inviting us to, to speak with you. Uh, my name is Hi Lova, this is-
Sucker Lee.
Uh, we are representative of KSH Leva Hospitality. Noteworthy, we have been studying the Bruton market for roughly a year and a half to two years. We have been cohabitants of Bruton in Monroeville, that's where our operation is based out of, for roughly thirty years now. So, we know the market, we know this place. And we just want to share with you our ideas and our vision for what we consider to be a world-class hotel, um, and project in, in Bruton.
I would just like to interrupt you just a second. We've been in conversations with the Leva family for a long time now. Uh, had come, gotten very close to, uh, to the point of presenting this to the council. And unfortunately, Roger Leva was killed in a car wreck. Y'all may have read about it in the paper. And so, it's delayed this until now, but, uh, I just wondered if I know that I- we have been talking for, as he mentioned, a long time, over a year.
Thank you. How much time do we have, by the way? Ten, fifteen, twenty minutes?
I'm sorry, wait a minute.
How much time do we have, sir?
As long as you need.
I could go on for like five hours, but, okay.
Don't do it today, you'll be there by yourself.
Not paid by a minute. So, what we want to talk to you about is what we consider to be the Bruton marketplace dynamics, what we think and what we envision the ho- the hotel to be, um, who we are, KSH Hospitality, and what we are loosely putting down as next steps. Now, we want to be really clear. I mean, we've spent a lot of time, energy, money in putting forth a proposal and plan and done our own studies. It's not without risk, so don't walk away from this thinking, "My gosh, this thing is, you know, we're about to sign the dotted line and it's home free, we're gonna have a property in, in six to nine months." There is considerable risk. Um, and we'll talk about that too, right? We believe that the Bruton market has been severely underserved and long overdue for a premium hospitality offer. When I mean premium hospitality offering, I mean one of the three or four large international hotel chains. Something that the city would be proud of, something that the, that would stimulate more and more economic growth in, in, in the city. We, we like what we've heard before us as well. Um, in Monroeville, our properties actually benefit from the lack of a premium hotel property in the City of Bruton. People actually are willing to drive an hour, hour and a half away even though they conduct commerce in Bruton. Number two, we, we talked about the synergistic value to the broader community. We have a proven track record of serving hospitality needs in small to medium markets, townships. Combined, the, the four main principles of KSH, um, Hospitality have in excess of a hundred and fifty years of hospitality experience. So, why Bruton? We think Bruton is ripe for a number of reasons. The market conditions are, we think, ready to, to accelerate and pop. The community is one that has, is, is deep in history and, and rich and, and has a place on the map in, in Alabama. And we foresee that the bigger of the bubbles is economic lift. We really generally believe that a world-class product would accelerate economic lift. And this is not unique in this market, it's any market. So, how do you really calculate the parameters of economic lift? It's number of business travelers that you can draw into this town and tourists, how much they spend per person. And then lastly, what's the quality of your hos- your hotel that would draw this, this crowd? When we looked at tier-one international brands, we have converged on three brands. One being the Marriott brand, which just recently, in case you don't know, bought, um, Starwood, which is the whole Sheraton, that whole, um, portfolio. IHG, which represents Crown Plaza and Holiday Inn and Holiday Inn Express and Hilton as we know it. For the longest time, here's where I talk about the risk. Um, we were really gung-ho forging ahead on a Hampton Inn product, which is a part of Hilton. But the more and more, when we did our own studies and feasibility studies with a up to a hundred mile radius of every property in every township in Alabama from, from Bruton, Bruton being the epicenter. Then we did another study where we looked at what type of products are coming up on the secondary market for sale. And we were seeing more and more Hampton properties coming up on the market that have roughly sixty-five units. So, we actually went in and peeled the onion, the proverbial onion. We realized that at sixty-five units, the Hampton Inn product is not as economically viable. Because what, what Hilton would like to do is really lift the, the Hampton product to be a more pre- premier product, not an economy product competing against, um, Holiday Inn Express. They actually have another product that they're introducing. What's?
Canopy.
Canopy, which we think could fit that bill. But nonetheless, we look at reputation and brand, global footprint, loyalty program, marketing reach. Look, in, as a business traveler, I like to travel and stay at a hotel where I'm going to earn my credit card points and my hotel stay points, right? And you don't have that right now and unfortunately in Bruton. Um, even if I were conducting business in Bruton, I probably would not stay in Bruton because the points are worth something to you, right? It's a kickback. When you take your kid to Disneyland, you get to stay for free, right? And, you know, you can smile all the way when you're there. But that's what we, we're lacking in Bruton at the moment. Again, what we did was we looked at the epicenter. Um, we believe that having a world-class tier-one property in Bruton would divert a lot of traffic from sixty-five a little earlier and have Bruton as a stopping point on the way to Florida and the coast. So, the strategic topography and location on the map of Bruton is one that we've considered, uh, when looking at investing in, in, in Bruton. Some of the considerations of the project, uh, we clearly want to select a brand from the shortlist. Sixty-five units, we think is important. We also believe that in this market, there is not room for more than three hotels, right? Um, with three or four floors, um, we'd like to have digital check-in and, and no booking fees, interior corridor access. The reason you want interior corridor access, as a parent, I don't like to stay at hotels that have exterior access because it's not safe. Older elderly people like to have the inside access because it's safe and handicap rooms are a little easier. And then the business traveler doesn't like the noise. When, when you want a good night's rest, you don't want cars parked right outside your, your room and you hear doors slamming and all of that. So, it provides safety and a good night's rest. Obviously, we will convert, conform with the existing ADA requirements and probably even go above the letter of the law for, uh, for that because we believe in that. And we think that the law is changing and we kind of know where the law is heading for handicap access rooms and other facilities. We're considering a pool facility with fitness rooms, sauna, spa. A differentiator, we believe, in this town would be the meeting room. In some of our, our properties, we actually have meeting rooms that are really small, the size of just a standard hotel room. And even in that footprint of a meeting room, we're seeing that it's driving traffic to the town and the hotel for conferences, meetings, um, family reunions, birthday parties, churches. We've had places of worship that were getting built or renovated and they decided to hold their prayer service in the meetings, in the meeting room. The other thing that we've seen is when you have more, um, natural disasters, like when Ivan happened. We've seen in some of our properties that the government, um, agencies that actually provide support and relief, they use the meeting room as a staging ground and to supply, and to store their supplies. So, there's many, many uses that, that we see for just a small meeting room. We would like to actually build something more like a, I want to be really careful with my, my words, a poor man's version of a conference center, right? Something with an atrium, a lobby, something where you can have a wedding reception and the full gamut, something that would host a hundred and fifty to two hundred people. That's our vision. Uh, breakfast, that's one that could be a point of contention. Maybe we don't serve breakfast. We make a conscious decision not to serve breakfast because, A, our cost structure is a little more attractive and B, it forces the hotel guests to spend money at a local enterprise, right? It stimulates local commerce. Um, and to be honest, that is a, a part of our business that we don't really make any money on. It's literally money that comes off of the bottom line. So, that's something we would consider if, if the hotel brand that we choose would allow us to do that. We would consider that and let that money be spent, uh, locally. Free Wi-Fi is commensurate with all tier-one properties in the guest room and lobby. Coffee and tea, again, what you see with a tier-one property, um, because there's not a Starbucks in this town. It's not unusual for people to say, "You know what? Let's have our meeting at over breakfast or we'll have a coffee in the lobby of, of the hotel." So, again, it just stimulates more business meetings and more conversations. Uh, again, just a prototype, what we're seeing, um, the hotel, a nice, a nice bed. Um, a fitness center, we think is just standard these days. It's not even an option. When we mean a fitness center, we don't want to just have a bike and a treadmill and, and, you know, we're ticking the box. We want to do something a little nicer because the business traveler really likes to stay fit. So, the location we have chosen is right across the street from the Walmart. We believe that the convergence of all of these roads with the sidewalk, that's, that's a walking trail that y'all have talked about and I know that's, um, on, on the docket at some point, really supports this location. There's great, um, roadside visibility. The facade will be really attractive. It's an epicenter of the town, something people would be proud of. Um, and if the Dogwood Hills Golf Course allows us, we think there's some synergistic value in allowing for, for having like a, a, an hour at the driving range kind of packages. So, think about this scenario, if somebody's driving, weary, on the way down to Florida or the coast or wherever, they say, "You know what? We have an emotional attachment with Bruton. We have an emotional attachment with the restaurant, with the town. That's, that's how this works, right? Let, let's just spend the night in town and we'll hit some golf balls in the morning, have a nice lunch at X restaurant that we like and we'll head on, head on, um, head on our way to the coast." That's not, that's something that we think is, is feasible with a tier-one world-class property. So, who are we? We are family-owned and operated, a boutique, um, hospitality firm. Uh, at the core of our value is, is integrity, hard work, um, community involvement. Um, we specialize in differentiated services with tier-one properties in, um, small to medium-sized towns. Um, our expertise, uh, is well over a hundred and fifty years for the four main principles of our, of our firm. And we really like to not only cater to our clients, we like to make sure that our work environment is healthy, people have the opportunity to grow and develop, and we like to give back to the community. It's really important. It's something from day one that we believed in. This is just a sampling of hotels that we own. Um, a lot of them in towns not very dissimilar from, um, the size of Bruton. So, how do we believe, and y'all can tell us, that this is aligned with your growth plans in Bruton? It supports George Pacific Expansion. We're already benefiting from this expansion with our properties in Monroeville. Because the workers there and people from Detroit would not, they want to stay in Monroeville because you don't have a tier-one brand, nor even debated with a tier-two brand in this town right now. Transient tourists en route to Destin and other areas, it's a stopping point, it's a hop-off point. Promote shopping and restaurants in Bruton. It's, um, and the little time I had before this meeting, you know, I went down to the store and spent some money and bought something really nice for my kid to take back tomorrow. We know that things that are year-round festivals, people need a place to stay where they're comfortable and they're safe and you feel that it's clean. We know that there has been interest in the past, based on our research for YMCA events, that actually have gotten borderline stale, that we think can be revitalized. We think the meeting room facility could be considered, um, for this town, a, a mini conference convention center, um, if, if done right. Sporting events, we know that softball tournaments have been stopped in this town because there's no hotel for all of these, all of these softball teams to stay at. Golf tournaments, we think, um, would come back to this town because there has been a, this town has been steeped in the legacy of golf. Um, and that's something that has not been, um, precipitated because of the absence of a tier-one hospitality product. We think planning is a good three months still for us, if done right. And again, these are, we're being very, um, not too aggressive with the timelines. Development is a good six to nine months and then we launch. We want, we want to be partners with the city. We want lock and step, want to hire people locally. We want to wherever we can. Um, we want to give back, want y'all to have a voice in, in the development of the property and then some of the specifics as well. And we need help, right? We need help with, we're asking the city for some help because the study that the city did last year, um, to test the economic viability of a hotel in this town, came back with a clear, you know what? We think the city, in its current economic instantiation, will not support a tier-one property. That's clear. Okay, so, a study that the city did says that. We believe that as well. However, we believe that the presence of a hotel, long run, will be successful and will actually bring eventually some of the traffic that the city so desperately needs to facilitate economic stimulation. And we're asking for help in the planning, development and launch and ramp phase of the hotel as well. We're asking for help with the land, municipality services, tax incentives, non-compete. Again, what we don't want to do is spend all of our limited precious capital in developing a world-class hotel in this town where if six months later, twelve months later, a fifth property or fourth property turns up, because then it won't be successful for anyone, right? We already talked, what we will provide to the city, a reputable tier-one international hotel brand, high-end facilities for all flavor or caliber of people coming into the town. We firmly believe that the meeting space will stimulate the local economy. Uh, we want to do little things in the back of the hotel, like have a gazebo with a grill so that people, if, if there are workers in town for a shutdown or whatnot, um, and they're on the per diem and can't afford to go spend twenty-five dollars at the restaurant for dinner or fifteen dollars, they have the ability to, to eat and actually have a good time and it's, it's a focal point. We believe in job creation. It could be anywhere from ten to fifteen, um, new jobs that are created in town, um, business development for the city that we'd partner with and a proven successful hotel experience. That's all we have. That was a condensed four-hour version. Any, any questions from, um- Any, any questions from the City Council, or the Mayor, or anybody?
Well, I know earlier today you met with Shad Chance for our economic development.
I did, sir.
And there are a number of, there's a federal program available for financing for them, there's a cooperative district that we can set up for this area. There's a number of things we can do that we're working on, and I appreciate y'all coming today, and as y'all know, I'll be back in touch soon if, if we can meet more. And I thought your presentation was very good.
Thank you, sir.
The next item, I'll call Anthony Rogers with Jam Production.
Mayor Lovelace, City Councilman, citizen of Bruton. Sir, I just want to thank you, my, I'm Anthony Rogers, I'm the president of Jam Production, we're out in Moby, Alabama. I just want to thank you and the councilmen in the city, and the citizen of Bruton for allowing us to help you guys participate in the Blueberry Drop, and my company and staff would love to work with Bruton in the near future doing other events, and I just wanted to come up here and thank all you guys. We had a great time Friday night here. Thank you.
Thank you. We had somebody in my office just, just before the meeting, was wanting to call Miss Baggett and tell her what a good job that she did on that.
All right.
I thought that was good. Are there any announcements or comments?
Have none of either, sir.
Watch your agenda.